One, call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Oh, yep, come on up. State your name for the record.
Joanna McMahon. I am here because this is the third year I am trying to get homestead. Third year. I have brought in my tax papers and presented them to the assessor's office, and they somehow get lost. I have give Hess, Mr. Hess. He keeps telling me, "Well, I have no record you been here." Okay. Told him who I talked to, told him what Dustin sat at, his son, her son's football pictures. How'd I know that if I wasn't there? Okay. Not my fault that they didn't give me a receipt. I shouldn't have to be punished for something that his employees didn't do. I shouldn't have to pay my, I should be getting my homestead this year. I'm not asking to go back to three years. I want it this year. I shouldn't have to pay it this year. Three years I've been trying to get this. Three years I have brought my tax papers in. I have been on disability since 2001, and I've just now filed for it for three years. I don't understand the problem.
Anything legal here, Anthony, that you can think of as to?
Don't say Hess. I'm gonna tell you, he's useless. He's useless. I was there. Because he's, you all got to decide. And here. Sure, I mean, you can make copies because, I mean, he has it again.
Ma'am, if you'll go across the hall to the county commission office, they'll make a copy of your stuff.
Yes, sir.
And make sure he gets it.
Okay.
Julie, just ask for Julie at the desk.
Julie?
Yes, ma'am.
And ma'am, if you get your homestead, you also qualify for 25 less dollars on your ambulance.
And be on speed.
Right, and I'm not asking for go back three years.
I understand. No, I'm saying, I'm just telling you that once you get this cleared up, then go to the ambulance authority and get that cleared up too.
Yes, I mean, I'm on disability. That's not a lot of money.
I understand.
You know?
But $25 is 25.
Exactly. And, you know, he's like, "Well, I have no proof you was here." It's not my fault. His employees like throwing their job. I brought my information in. He kept saying, "Well, I have no proof of that." Again, not my fault. You know, I brought it to you. I told you where she sat. I told you about, I told you about her little boy being in the football team. How would I know that if I wasn't there? You know? So, I mean, I understand why he just couldn't have John Henry for this year because my paperwork was there. They didn't give me a receipt. Again, not my, not my fault. So, I mean, I think I should be able to get for this year, and I have to, you know. It's not fair to me. I'm entitled to this.
That's right. The law allows that.
Yes.
So, get the information to Anthony, and we'll, we'll help you through this.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items from the public? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? If there's no modifications or changes?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second.
We got one here on flat screen that, uh...
Yeah, I seen you. I did see you.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motions carries? We have to, we're a little bit of delay, but I think that was, that was for the positive, so. All righty. Back up here, let me get my... Any questions for Tracy, a purchase order? All good there? Uh, internal budget revisions? They don't have any of those.
You do not.
So, you have change in status. Have change in status received from the honorable sheriff, Rob Blair, for the following employees for the increase in salaries to keep qualified personnel up with the local salary scale in surrounding areas, and to show appreciation for their hard work effective, these will be effective on October the 15th, 2024. Diana Breeze will go from $56,878 to $57,852. Jamie Elliott will go from $42,399 to $45,066. Abby McKenzie and Brianna Savado will go from $36,870 to $42,533. Uh, see, change in status received from the honorable sheriff Blair for Kendra Dehaven. She is going from part-time to full-time administrative assistant with the salary increase of $17.83 per hour to $42,533 an annual salary, and that is effective October the 15th. Have a letter of resignation received from Emergency Communications for April Sprouse, and that is effective October the 18th, 2024. That's all we have in changes. Uh, we have approval of the amendments, and Mr. Barnhart was not here, so we can go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for September the 26th. Oh, and I'm sorry, in the consent age, I'm sorry, Tracy's, or Tracy, Annie. Uh, cancel check request, have a stop payment request from the clerk's office. Uh, bond release, countertop solutions, grading, BCP file number 2311-357. It's tied to BCP file number 2204-212, I'm sorry, -112, and number 2310-0160, that's the grading bond. Or, number 05L404464, engineering has made that recommendation. We have a bond release for Spring Mills, PUD, commercial lot 28. Uh, grading BCP file 2402-033 tied to BCP file 2402-032, uh, number 004-20 and 2204-00245. The grading bond number is 1006547499, and engineering has made that recommendation. We have a bond release, cash bond release from 2003 Industrial Circle LLC, trailer equipment storage area, BCP file 2403-082, tied to BCP file 2403-081, and number 2207-208 and 2208-0221. Uh, grading cash bond check number 310279. Engineering has made that recommendation. And one last one here, a bond reduction for ChemPac Incorporated Building Edition, BCP file number 2311-379, tied to number 21-00 and 2205-146, and number 2210-047. Grading, a letter of credit number 354, and engineering has made that recommendation. So, any questions for Doug on that? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Juan, only, only increases that the sheriff has requested, that is due to reorganization.
That is correct. It's a budget neutral decision with that he had a senior employee that, that was a leader of that particular team. Uh, the replacement of that, that person came in at the reduction of all the amounts distributed.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thanks for bringing that up, Eddie. For clarifying. So, it was a budget neutral for him?
It was a budget neutral change.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, moved and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likes on opposed? Sorry. All the, motion carries?
Are that delayed?
A little bit delayed. I'll, I'll try to slow down a little bit. Thank you.
First day back from vacation. Excited.
Yeah. That's, yeah. Yeah, it was a good vacation, yeah. All righty. Uh, nothing from the assessor for the assessment, correction of assessments? Board of meeting reports. H D, you want to give a little bit, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, um, I can. Uh, we had a roundhouse meeting yesterday. The, um, we, we went over to the 24, 25, uh, rent home rates for next year. Um, made some adjustments so that, uh, give a, uh, adding to the nonprofit secondary schools so that they can get a 25% discount. Uh, this also adds to our mission of, um, uh, continuing education of history in the roundhouse to schools, uh, encouraging the schools to do proms and different things to get students in there that have never been to the roundhouse to see, see the place and, and learn a little about, about local history and about the railroad possibly, and maybe, uh, come back in the future to, uh, help assist with the, with the facility and the projects. We are 99% done with the HVAC project. Um, we're just waiting, we have a little bit more of electrical upgrade. We're waiting on a little bit of legislation money we're hoping to come through, um, and get that completed, and then, of course, we just have to get that pipe moved for Mountaineer Gas, um, and hook that up, and the project there will be pretty much finished, and, uh, there's three small things on the punch list for the elevator that were design errors that are being worked out, and that is just about at completion. Um, uh, farmer's market concludes, uh, October 26th is the final one. Um, there'll also be a program for kids, a Halloween pumpkin carving, some other things at that day on the 26th. Uh, groundskeeping's been well. We've just got the place cleaned up, uh, in the ruins and on the outside. Um, brought in a, uh, a landscaping group that got all that cleaned up and getting the trees cut around the saw shop and getting the place, um, ready to get through winter, I guess, and into, to next year. So, things are looking good down there. Um, we do have the, of course, the merry makers market coming up in December. That'll start, uh, Black Friday weekend through the weekend before Christmas again, as a reminder. And, um, that's pretty much what's going on down there.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All righty, sir. Thank you.
Hopefully, I'll get, I'm, I'm struck up here because of the hurricane. I couldn't get on a flight yesterday, so...
Oh, boy. Well, be safe wherever you're at.
Yeah.
Mr. Catlett?
Uh, didn't have any board meetings this past week, uh, but I did attend Saturday evening, uh, the Recovery Dinner fundraiser and enjoyed the evening, and, uh, it seems like they had a very successful event. It was, uh, best part of it was when they had the clients speak, you know, the people that it's really affected and helps help them, and the wonderful thing, so... And then on Tuesday, uh, I had a meeting with Dr. Sacks, this new superintendent of schools, Eddie, and I met with him at the Board of Ed, and we'll probably try to do so every month or so, just to kind of stay in tune with, uh, what they're doing and how we can help each other, so... Had a great conversation with him, actually, so that's, that's all I had.
That's, you know, that's, that needs, that line of communication needs to stay open a lot.
Yep.
You know, with everything that's going on in this county, and thanks for, uh, making that happen and getting started again. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Eddie?
Uh, yes, sir. As, uh, Mr. Catlett said, you know, we met with the, with the superintendent to continue, continue to discuss, in particular, growth issues, uh, and some of their plan, listening to some of their plans to be able to handle some of the growth. Also attended, um, the, um, the fundraiser at, at the Holiday Inn, but one of the, one of the best part of the entire evening was when Angie Gray mentioned that there's been a 29% reduction in deaths, overdose deaths in Burke County. That's, that's way ahead of everybody...
The state was 1%, I think, like average.
So we got a lot of people working to try and get people healthy and keep them, get them healthy and everything else. But in the meantime, there's a lot of efforts going on there to assist those folks who are struggling. I also had a 911 Advisory Board meeting. Currently, they have five people in the academy, one of which is already pre-certified, so that will expedite that person getting out as a call taker. So they're excited about that. And the 911 conversion for January is still on track. Keeping the fingers crossed on that one. I'm sure Mr. Wine is also.
Next generation, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, and I had a Development Authority meeting also. You know, they continue to show properties throughout the county, different industries looking. And also the commercial laundry that landed here. They are pushing dirt. They're on consumer drive. So a lot of things happening with them. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the public for their outreach and assisting the folks, in particular, in North Carolina through Hurricane Helene. But, you know, there's so many people out here doing a lot of good stuff. And I just, I'd like for us to be able to just publicly thank them for their efforts and for taking care of mankind. You know, obviously, I was at Milton in Florida, so more devastation and hurt there, so. Just a lot going on.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Alrighty. My apologies for not being able to make the fundraiser on Saturday night. I was out of town, but I attended it last year, and it was a great event. And it was something really special for the county. And Steve, you're right. When you start hearing the testimonials of the ones we've helped, you know, even if it's only one, it's one less that's going to be, you know.
Worth the effort.
It's worth the effort. But I had a planning commission meeting on Monday. There were four public hearings, none to be too contentious, but... And then preliminary plat approvals and a couple final plat approvals. And then we had a staff discussion, which was more of an agenda. I guess, adjournment, not an agenda. So didn't have a whole lot going on there. But other than that, that was the end of what I had, so.
Want to mention one other thing?
Uh huh.
Oh, he just left. He just walked out again. Kelly Fink, see if he's... I'm just going to introduce you. He's a dear friend of mine. That is Kelly Fink from Allensville, West Virginia, one mile north of Hedgesville.
Okay.
I'm a '71 graduate. He's a '72 graduate. And been a good friend of mine and buddy in his family for a long time. He came in to get a permit, and the last time he was here, it was upstairs. So he's had a little loss, so we got him straightened out, right?
Alright, well, nice to meet you and welcome. Come back anytime.
Yo, Steve French, you were introduced at the commission meeting today.
Alrighty. Anything else? That it? Alrighty. Next up, we have... Yep. Whoop, just walked in just in time.
We have the honorary councilman.
Oh.
Honorary commissioner.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and do... Just hang in there just one second. We're going to have an honorary county commissioner dedication here right today. And Eddie, you want to take care of that for us, or? You ready to go, Eddie?
I...
Madison Regalia.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
My name is Madison Regalia. I go to St. Joseph's School, and I am a member or a player of... I am a part of the volleyball team. We won the championship this year and... Or for the VMCA, and we have our championship game for basically the whole thing next Tuesday. I really enjoy volleyball. It's probably one of my favorite things. And when I'm older, I was... One of my ideas to become is a flight attendant.
Great, that sounds good. But I have to tell you this, that when I saw her last name, I was able to take a vacation with her grandfather earlier this year down to Son and Fund. Charlie would understand that. But when I saw that, I had to ask to see if that's her, so. So we indirectly, I know Maddie, but your grandfather. Welcome today. And you have any questions or you want to interject with anything? Just throw something at me and get my attention and let me know, and the mic will be yours. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If it gets too serious, even though we've notified the public, you might want to let them know that as of Friday at 5:00, the location of the county clerk for the last 200 years will be moved here.
Yes, that is correct. I did see that on my bunch of...
So they begin the move at end of day Friday.
Friday.
And they'll reopen in their new location downstairs on the first floor of this building at 8:00 Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. So, good luck on the move. And if you go down to the old courthouse, you went to the wrong location, so you need to come on back to here, so. Alright.
Sounds like a fun holiday weekend.
Doesn't it? It sounded like somebody working.
So did facilities and IT in your county administrative waldy are having fun.
Yeah. Well, if you need us, you know where we'll be.
I do know.
At the other end of the phone, probably enjoying the rest of the weekend. Alrighty. Next up is Charlie Hellman from Cox Holiday &amp; Young, PLLC, representing our financial... Or presenting our financial records that I think we did pretty good on?
I think so.
Good, good.
Alright, so I am Charlie Hellman. I'm from Cox Holiday &amp; Young, and I'm here to present the financial statement, legal advertisement. This has to be done per West Virginia state code. First, thank you for having me here today. I'd also like to thank Gary and Penny, Gary Horvath and the Finance Department, the Tax Office, and the Grant Department. They all get us information so we can pull these financial statements together. So appreciate them working with us so we could get this accomplished. These financial statements... Can you hear me alright?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, these financial statements are for June 30, 2024. They are... You might notice that the page numbers are out of order. That is on purpose. It's for financial... Or it's for presentation purposes. We'll have them in order for the advertisement. A brief history and a preview of what we're going to look at today. During the COVID pandemic, the commission got COVID grant funds, so you had increased revenues during that timeframe. Last year, we saw deficits. We had to spend that money. All that money has to be expended by December of 2026. So this year, we're going to see that money was still being spent, but we see some financial consistency returning to the financial statements. Right then. Page one, balance sheet. This is on a modified accrual basis of accounting. So there are some things you're... Looks like you're missing. Fixed assets, long-term debt, non-current payables and receivables. So anything greater than 60 days will not be on there. And your pension assets and liabilities. They are not on there. Total assets, top of the page, $36.6 million. $34.5, that is cash. Total liabilities, $409,000. Most of that is related to inter-fund payables. And then your fund balance, $34.9 million. We're going to circle back to that. We have a benchmark. We're going to compare that to last year. Total assets, very comparable. Only difference is your cash went down $1 million. Receivables went up $1 million. Tell me your tax collections were a little slower in fiscal year '24 compared to last year. Liabilities increased by $200,000. That is just due to timing of inter-fund payables. And then your fund balance decreased $950,000. Hold on to that number because we're going to discuss it on the next page. The page two, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. We are still on the modified accrual basis of accounting, so you're going to see capital outlays on here as an expenditure. Starting at the top of the page, revenues, $65.2 million. 75% of these revenues make up of four items. Property taxes of $29.5 million. Charges for services of almost $8 million. That includes inspection fees, franchise agreements, and IRP fees. Other taxes, $5.8 million. That's mainly your property transfer tax. And the miscellaneous revenue of $4.65 million. 3.6 of this is related to opioid settlement funds. Moving on to expenditures, $66.1 million. 77% of these expenditures make up of two line items. General government and public safety expenditures. But for 50% of those dollars, related to salaries and wages, payroll taxes, retirement, and insurance. The other big line item there, $11.7 million related to fixed asset purchases labeled capital outlay. Meaning you had more expenditures than revenue and a deficit of $950,000. Comparing this to last year, revenues increased $11.3 million, mainly due to increase in property tax revenue and that opioid settlement money of $3.6 million. Expenditures decreased $1.5 million. That's a 2% decrease, so we have some consistency there. Last year, your net decrease in fund balance or your deficit was $13.5 million. This year, $950. So that's the end of your modified accrual. We're going to go to the full accrual basis. This is more of like what you'd see if you're a for-profit company. Your statement of net position comparable to your balance sheet. It does include fixed assets, long-term debt, your required pension reporting, and all payables and receivables. We're going to look at that first column.
Give me... Charlie, what page are you on, second?
This is page three.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So we're going to look at that first column. This says for governmental activities. Midway through the page, you see total assets of $70.67 million. $34.5, that is cash. And $34.4 million of that is fixed assets. Now towards the bottom of the page and going on to the next page, we have deferred outflows. This is required pension reporting based off of actuarial calculations, and we get the numbers from the state of West Virginia. The most meaningful number there to you is a $2.7 million for employer contributions to pension and OPEB plans. That is what you contributed to plans during... Next, we have liabilities. So that, we're on page four. $5.9 million. $2 million of that is related to leases payable, two leases concluded during fiscal year '24, and you added one. Net pension liability, $2.5 million. That's based off of West Virginia schedules. And compensated absences. This is your vacation accrual, $1.7 million. Going to page five. We have deferred inflows. Again, that's more required pension reporting. And then we have your net position of $70.1 million. We're going to compare this to prior year real quick. Total assets increased $10.5 million, mainly due to fixed asset additions. Total liabilities decreased $1 million. This is due to a decrease in your pension liability, offset by an increase in your leases payable for a new vehicle. Your net position increased $9.9 million. And hold on to that number because we're going to discuss it on the next statement. I believe that brings us to page six. Statement of activities. You're a for-profit company. This will be similar to your income statement. However, your expenses are first, then you have your revenues. Expenses $5.5... Sorry, $55.6 million. Includes all the expenses we talked about before, but it also includes depreciation expense that was $1.7 million. And then there are some other small adjustments in there for a full accrual basis. Revenue, $65.5 million. Again, the same four items make up 75% of your revenue. Property taxes, charges for services, other taxes, mainly the property transfer tax and the opioid settlement money. Meaning you had more revenues than you had expenses. You mean you have surplus of $9.9 million. Compared to prior year. Expenses decreased $700,000. That's a 1% variance. Expenses were very comparable to last year. Revenue increased almost $12 million, mainly due to property taxes and the opioid settlement money. Last year, the commission had a deficit of $3 million. This year, we're seeing a surplus of $9.9 million. Last two pages that you have, they're reconciliations. It's taking you from the fund-level financial statements to the government-wide. So the first one over the modified accrual and full accrual is just reconciling the two. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the financials.
One thing of importance that Charlie's talking about, she keeps mentioning the revenue you had before. Last year, this looked not good because you had gained huge portions of ARPA funds and CARES Act money in the prior fiscal year, and then you spent it last year. So our net position was not pretty. This is more normal and to show you that you're in a good position financially. Professional accountants are telling you that, so we're going to make it another year without having to go crazy. But remember, you've invested the better part of right around $25 million in assets that are still ongoing. So the county commission spends a lot of money on these buildings right now.
Part of that was mandated, that we had to spend it, you know.
Well, the ARPA funds came with direction of what you could use them for.
Well, and in today's purchase log, there's $1.6 million that went to assist the water department on their renovation of...
It's all gone. You have no more ARPA money in your ARPA account. It's out of here. None left.
So in your accounting opinion, Berkeley County seems to be...
You have a very strong carryport. You're in a really strong position.
It's an unqualified opinion that says that Berkeley County seems to be...
I don't have an opinion on this. These are unaudit.
Right, but they got once...
It's a very qualified opinion. It's very qualified.
Well, man, after the letter comes out, it usually states it.
Yes, yes. So that is true.
Alrighty, well, any other questions for Charlie or the group?
Much better about it this year than I did last year. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And many thanks to Clerk Petrusi and his staff for helping prepare this stuff because this is... While Charlie and Chuck work hard, Sherry's right there with them and Tony. I mean, it's a big job. It really is.
You want to give that kind of credit to Tony today?
Oh, he's a hard worker. He's moving the whole complex by himself over the weekend.
Alright, Tony. You got my number if you need help, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Hopefully I made that as painless as possible.
That was good. Alrighty. Well, yeah, we need the motion to approve the presenting of the financial statements. Can I have a motion for that reporting?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, we're going to take a break here real quick and wait on Jennifer to show up.
All right, we're back in session and today we have Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for Employee Recognition. Jennifer, it's all yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'd like to first bring up Anna Hernandez.
Hey, before you get started, wasn't there something you wanted to say, Gary?
I just did and she's clearly corrected me and said, "I've been outside waiting."
Oh, that was okay.
Made me feel bad. I didn't want to slow down progress. So we are here today to recognize Anna Hernandez. She's one of our senior telecommunicators. And for her delivering a baby boy at the end of August. So just a little quick recap of what happened on August 29th at 1:14 PM. Anna received a 911 call from a female advising. Her daughter was in active labor. They didn't think they were going to make it to the hospital and so they needed an ambulance. Anna advised the caller to pull over so that the ambulance could be dispatched and provide her with instructions on how to deliver. So over the next seven minutes of that call, Anna gave very good pre-arrival instructions. And again, at the end of seven minutes, we had a baby boy welcoming into the world. So it was quite an experience and we actually just listened to the call again. So the baby was delivered at the Sunoco Station on Winchester Avenue in a truck.
What a story that baby's going to tell when he gets older.
Exactly. So we wanted to provide Anna today with small recognition for her job and the baby's delivery. So Anna, this is recognition for delivering a baby boy. And again, for your assistance on August 20th. And then the most special thing, and we've given out two this year, so this is your second one, is a stork pen. And so these in the dispatch world are something that are treasured because it doesn't happen very often. Your first one?
Very nice.
Thank you for your help in delivering.
How's the mom and baby?
Doing well. We talked to the grandmother recently and everything was going well. They were going to try to be here today, but it looks like it didn't work out. But they were very happy for Anna's assistance and I'm sure EMS providers.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure that the newborn really thanks you a lot more, so. Oh, gosh. They've probably never been to my workshops. Well, congratulations.
You're welcome. Thank you. Could we get a picture with them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't know if there was anything else.
That is our recognition.
That is it?
That is it.
Well, you've got quite the entourage.
We do. We have our, well, while we're here, we'll bring up, we have our new academy folks that just listened to the call this morning. So they were able to hear what Anna did the other day, going out Jessica, Carolyn, Akoya, and Bryce. And then Kim, as you all know, is a shift supervisor, was also here. Right? Or no? Oh, she wasn't, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Different shifts.
I would just, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I just, way back, way back, a long time ago, when I was with the City of Marshall Fire Department, we dispatched all fire and ambulance calls in Berkeley County. We didn't have the computer screens, thank God. We didn't have the skill sets that you all have today to be able to render aid to somebody truly when they need that assistance. We did not have that. And to the commission, back in the day, it was in like the mid-'80s, when they transferred over to Berkeley County Dispatch, and the number was 263-0911. It wasn't 911 system yet. So where I know where we were, to where we are today, and the abilities that you all have to be able to take those calls and push that information back out, or in these particular situations where you're able to give direct assistance, verbal assistance and comfort to them, because that's a very scary time. So thank you for what you do. Thank the leadership from the commission to Barb Hissam, to Mary Cackley, to Jen Swisher, all these people in between. Paula's been involved a very long time. Thank you all for everything that you've done and to raise our level of service in Berkeley County.
And also, weren't we recognized, was it last year, as the, one of the top 911?
It was the year before, and actually we go up for reaccreditation next year. We've kept up with our reaccreditation standards and so we will be working on that process after the beginning.
I had a question. Was this mother's first child by any chance? Okay. Just appears.
Can imagine your stories that you all have, and I'm glad they're good. I know there's some that aren't.
If it was a girl, they probably would have named him that.
Maybe they'd name him Sonny. Sonny from Sunoco is actually the topic. Hey, we're going to take a break and get some pictures here.